Pray and I will lead the prayer this morning. Let us pray. We turn to you, God, our Lord, the eternal light. We ask for your blessing on us as councillors and officers of Dembisher County Council. We seek your support and your light in all our dealings and all our work because without you we cannot do anything. Please give us your guidance to see the way clearly ahead to overcome every difficulty. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. So official welcome now, we are being webcast now. County council meeting on the 26th of January. The first item is apologies. Anyone with any apologies? I have had one. Councillor Gwyneth, councillor Gwyneth Consular not too well at the moment, so I'm sure we send her our best wishes for speedy recovery. I don't think that there are any others.
Yes, I have.
Ian Blake.
I also have councillor Bob Murray and councillor Joan Butterfield.
Thank you.
Councillor Pat Jones.
Any other apologies? Thank you very much. Declarations of interest, can I ask Gary Williams to lead us through this? Thank you, Gary.
Under the council's code of conduct, to declare any personal or prejudicial interest in respect of any business to be considered at today's meeting, such interest should be declared now or as soon as the councillor affected becomes aware that they have a personal or prejudicial interest in the business. All members declaring an interest are required to state clearly what the interest is and to advise whether it is a personal interest or a personal and prejudicial interest as defined in the code of conduct. Any member declaring a prejudicial interest is required to leave the chamber for the duration of the business and can take no part in the proceedings. Members with a personal interest only may take part in the debate in any vote. If a personal or personal and prejudicial interest is declared today that has not previously been disclosed and recorded, the councillor concerned will be required to complete and sign a declaration of interest form which is available on request.
Thank you very much, Gary. Anybody wishing to declare an interest in any part of today's agenda? If you please remember when we come to a particular item, if anything arises, I will accept your declarations of interest then. Item three. Urgent matters, I have got one which I want to start off with and then we will go to the one from Kerry Meyer Davis. I would like to congratulate Anne Jones, Member of the Senate, for being awarded the OBE. So congratulations to Anne Jones, she was a former councillor with us years ago. We have got a question from Kerry Meyer Davis. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. I hope you're all well. Just a bit of history about the question that we've got. In July 2020, Welsh Government supported a 10-year plan to put social enterprise at the heart of a fairer and more sustainable and more prosperous Wales. As stated by the Deputy Minister of Economy and Transport, Lee Waters, social enterprises have a key role to play in both the recovery from COVID-19 economic blow and in helping build back better. Social and environmental enterprises in Rhythyn and Demby have been taking practical actions towards supporting the climate emergency and wellbeing and future generation acts in the last few years, but have been unable to find the support needed when seeking affordable and suitable space to start out to test their concepts. To support community regeneration and to bring back local communities and town centres, it is essential that we work creatively, keeping the future of our communities in the forefront of our minds. The lack of affordable premises has been a recurring theme with regards to the barriers of local social and community organisations, and there seems to be a real opportunity for us to work collaboratively to utilise the underutilised and underused empty spaces that Dembisher County Council currently has. Could Dembisher County Council provide a full list of all properties, land, rooms, assets owned by Dembisher Town and Community Councils that are underutilised and underoccupied?
Thank you very much. Councillor Julian Thompson-Hill will respond. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you, thank you very much for the, for the question. As with most things, this probably is not at quite as, as simple as, as first envisaged. We certainly can provide a schedule of vacant premises within our property portfolio. Having looked at the list, there were very few actually on there that aren't vacant school premises actually. And we can also provide a current list of vacancies within our commercial portfolio. And I think I probably want to stress here that, that our asset strategy essentially is not to hold any building or property that we don't actually have a requirement for, for either operational or commercial reasons. So we can, we can, we can provide that, that's not, that's not an issue. Included within the question, I think, was also a comment about town and community council buildings. Obviously that, we can't provide those because we don't have any control over, over those data, we can only provide data for, for Dembisher County Council assets. In terms of underutilisation, it's a bit more slightly, slightly more of a difficult prospect. In terms of our office portfolio, we are aware where we have, where we have vacancies. And in fact, we have been working with partners. You'll be aware of, you know, we have NHS colleagues working out of County Hall. We've got the coroner working there. And we're, we were, we're in the process of moving other buildings, other groups into the county hall in order to maximise the utilisation of that. Of course, all of this is underpinned by the fact that if you, if you wanted a literal answer as of today, all our buildings are underutilised and unoccupied essentially because of COVID and that's the, I suppose, the underlying issue here. We've seen the significant change in working patterns that has happened over the last 12 months and nobody knows exactly what will happen moving forward. So we will have to, to reassess that, you know, as and when we get to, back to some semblance of normality. In terms of the commercial portfolio from its, from its title, I mean, these are, these are things like industrial units, farms primarily, where we run them as a, essentially as a commercial operation to gain rental income. We have generally very high occupancy rates in there, but those are, those are obviously occupied on a, on a market rent basis. I, I don't want to steal the speaker's thunder, but I, I've obviously been privy to your supplementary question as well, so if it's okay with, with yourself, I'll answer both in one, in one, in one hit. Your second supplementary question related to policies relating to community asset transfers. We don't actually have any formal adopted policy for this, but we have carried out a significant number of these over the, over the recent years, but they're dealt with on a, on a case by case basis. Primarily, we've been working with town or community councils, transferring the asset to them and then they would work with, with other more local groups. Normally, it's a case of us being approached about a specific property by an organisation. Occasionally, we will, we will actually go out where we see a natural fit perhaps for, for, for an organisation to, to take responsibility for, for a building. But it would again be based upon, obviously, as, as you would probably expect seeing as we're dealing with public assets, a business plan to play, you know, to, to clarify how buildings will be utilised and how ongoing maintenance and running costs would be able to, to be delivered. And they would generally be done on, on a long-term transfer. I know sometimes we get asked for the short-term leases and things like that and licences, but we generally wouldn't go along those lines. We'd be looking for a, you know, a whole site permanent transfer if that was the way that people were looking. And then we have an entirely, we have an entire process that we would have to go through in terms of making sure that we, that we complied with the, with the Local Government Act disposals consent. That, you know, we would have to get external valuations on it and then there's an internal process with regards to, to making a decision. So I'm sorry, that's a bit of a long convoluted answer. I hope it, it answers the question and certainly we can provide the, the question with those, with those two lists of schedules for, for our properties. And hopefully that, that answers the questions to the best of my knowledge. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Julian Thompson-Hill. And thank you Kerry Meyer Davis for the question. Thank you. Take care. We'll move on to councillor Brian Jones, who's asked for an update about the flooding. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Actually, it's just a brief statement from me regarding the flooding in Dembisher last week, and I think it's a very appropriate thing to do. The flooding caused last week in Dembisher by Storm Christoph was devastating for the, the people, the residents, the businesses, that had flown homes flooded, businesses flooded. And I'm sure everyone on this meeting this morning would, would, would like to express our sympathies with those people affected by Storm Christoph as they begin the long journey recovering from it. I was out and about, it was awful to watch it unfolding last week on the evening. And I've since been out to St Asav, to Rhythyn, to the Llanetlun Bridge and even my hometown of Rill, where the same retail park was flooded and the fourth Berwyn area had a near miss. Pretty awful to see that. And I've got a visit booked in this week with Mervyn Parry to go and look up his, his area of the world, the rural areas to see the effects up there. I'd like to say, pay a small little tribute as the lead member to the, the Dembisher Highway staff on the ground who put a lot of work in preparing for the storm before it arrived. They were involved on the ground along with locals in the affected areas and, and in some cases councillors. So I'd like to pay tribute to, to all those people that were involved as it was happening. And our Dembisher staff are working still today on, on the aftermath and the fallout of, of the storm. So tribute to everybody concerned there. Unfortunately, these storm events are becoming a regular occurrence, not just in Dembisher, but across the globe. So we need to review and, and look at our endeavours to see what we can do as an authority to best protect all our communities going forward. If I can say, Chair, to finish on a positive note, at a recent scrutiny meeting, it was discussed about the formation of a task and finish group to look at potential unknown flood areas, flood risk areas in Dembisher with a view to doing something really positive. And the highlight line of this group, the remit is being put together as I speak, but the highlight on the group is that we've already had a buying agreement from Natural Resources Wales to be part of the group, for Welsh Water to be part of the group. Obviously, Dembisher County Council will be in that group, but we also want to have involved in the group land and farm owners within the county, the, the relevant local county councillors when they're looking at a specific area. And I'm really fucking looking forward to this group coming into existence because I think it could do a lot of good. It could be a really good tool and a good mechanism to combat the climate change effects that, that we're seeing across the UK around the world. Thank you, Chair.
Any other question there?
Thank you. Are we taking questions? That's up to you, Chair. Usually in the urgent matters, we either get a statement from somebody or a question under the formal process. I'd better stick to the usual order. So if anybody is interested in asking a question, if you ask a question after the meeting, please. Apologies, Jeanette, we're not taking questions.
It wasn't a question, it was a thank you.
Yeah, well.
Okay, I'll thank, say thank you on your behalf because I think that the county council workers, staff, councillors and everybody who was involved with the flooding problems in every part of the county worked extremely hard to help those less fortunate who were affected. And I'm sure we are extremely grateful to them for that. As Brian said, it's something that's happening more often now. And as you know, we in Cheltenham have lost Pont Llanerch, so that road is going to be closed for quite a while, I'm afraid. Thank you all very much for your contribution. The next speaker is councillor, councillor Emrys Wynn. Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you, Emrys. Can I also reiterate the comments that you and Brian Jones have made with regards to the flooding and I look forward? Over the weekend, we saw reports in the press saying that Dembisher County Council staff had, had a COVID-19 vaccine from the National Health Service, even though that they weren't eligible to have one. If this story was already known to the county council, why did, when the councillors communicated about the story that was about to break? Thank you very much. Chief Executive, Leader first. Apologies, who? Councillor Hugh Evans. Thank you, Chair. Can you all hear me okay? Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Emrys, for that question. I'm going to respond initially and I'll ask Judith to come in after.
The council on this occasion, as your question implies, Emrys, this information was not shared with any members of the council. And it is only officers who were familiar with the situation prior to it breaking out in the press. My response was that, and due to the seriousness of the accusation, we did call a special cabinet meeting on Sunday evening to try and understand what was happening. We then called another informal cabinet meeting on Monday morning with officers. It was unclear as to what had happened within the authority. And as cabinet members and all members, we were in the dark and that's why we agreed to call for an internal investigation to get to the bottom of what was being highlighted in the press. And the reason we called for an internal investigation was for three main considerations. The first point, it's really important to note, while things are highlighted in the press, it's important that we as an authority, officers and members are familiar with all the facts before we either take any action or have a position on it. Therefore, responding to the press is not the ideal way to reach a conclusion. The second point I wanted to make was around the staff. As we know, we have brilliant staff within the authority. The amount of work that they have done during COVID has been quite unbelievable and I didn't want our staff to be painted all with the same brush with the possible actions, and I have to say possible actions, of the very small minority. The third point, and probably the most important point, is that it's important that we as an authority give assurance to our residents that the support that we have for Betsy is open and transparent, as we will all have residents in our communities who are desperately and patiently waiting for the vaccination. And it's important to them that everything the authority does is open and transparent and that we can assure them that we will not be condoning, supporting or allowing anybody to jump the queue and that it would be totally in line with Welsh Government guidelines and the priority administered within that. And that's really important, Emrys, that we have that clear position from a member's perspective. Do you have, Emrys? And I'll ask Judith to respond to that.
Thank you very much, Emrys, and I'll ask Judith to respond. Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members.
County Council submitted a list to Betsy Cadwellada along with every other local authority and public institution and private institution that's eligible in North Wales, containing a list of our staff that were eligible for a COVID vaccination, according to the Welsh Government priorities. Those same staff were then sent an email by Betsy Cadwellada inviting them to book an appointment to receive that vaccination. What became apparent to us recently is there's the possibility that if eligible staff had forwarded that email, there was a glitch in the Betsy Cadwellada system that may have allowed non-eligible staff to have potentially booked an appointment. When this became apparent to us, we contacted all staff to instruct not to forward this email and that was apparent on the email. And our IT team are currently investigating what action has, has taken place, if any, amongst those staff. We've completed the first phase of that investigation and at the moment, there is certainly no evidence of any mass sharing of the email or indeed therefore as a subsequently fraudulent attempts to obtain a vaccination. I can assure members that once this investigation is complete, if any of our staff have taken an appropriate action, action to obtain a vaccination, that will be followed up with disciplinary action. However, I just need to emphasise to you that at this moment in time, there is no evidence that, that staff have used the, the email loophole to obtain a vaccination. And as the leader said, our staff have worked incredibly hard throughout this pandemic. I have the utmost confidence in their integrity and their honesty. And I sincerely believe that if anybody has taken any action that was inappropriate, it would be a very, very small number of staff and that, as I say, disciplinary action will be taken. And of course, I will update members once that investigation has concluded. I have to say that the report in the press, I believe, was inaccurate and I don't think represented the situation as it currently is on the ground in Dembisher. So just to reiterate, at this moment in time, we have no reason to believe that any Dembisher staff have accessed a COVID-19 vaccination when they shouldn't have done so according to Welsh Government priorities.
Thank you very much and thank you to Hugh as well. Thank you both. Can I please come back in? Yes, you've got the right to supplementary or an additional question if it's related or arising from the answer that you've received. Thank you very much.
From said now, when this became apparent to us, can I ask a question? When did this become apparent to yourself, Chief Executive, or your officers? And when did the, was it apparent for yourselves that it was going to be hitting the press?
Okay. It was on the 14th, I believe, in January that it became apparent to us that there may be a loophole in the Betsy Cadwellada booking system that could possibly have allowed staff to book an inappropriate vaccine. It was at that stage we sent the, the email to all staff instructing that this was not allowed and at that time we commenced the, the investigation. I presume that the press picked up on it subsequent from that, but then obviously it's taken some time for them to, to concoct the story that they did.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I've got the mic on now. Thank you very much to you both for your responses and for the question. I think that councillor Arwel Roberts hasn't. We haven't received his statement, so can I ask kindly the planning department, the local development plan, to respond fully to councillor Roberts with regards to the question that he intended to raise this morning? So if we all copied in to the answers well about the LDP? Yes, that's fair enough. Therefore, we will go on to item four, the minutes. I'll go through them slowly. We'll take them for accuracy first. I got it starting on page seven. Items one to three. Any matters of accuracy? I have got one in Welsh. It says condolences are sent to the AM. That title has been changed now, hasn't it? I think I'm correctly saying that. Yes, you are correct, Chair. I'm sure the minutes can be corrected. Page eight, items four and five. Over the page to page nine, which shows the resolution. Any comments? No? Over to page 10. And I've got one on this page just before item six in the Welsh again, unfortunately, that the cabinet confirms. Somebody's forgotten to change the name, it should state council there. Going over to page 11. Any matters of accuracy? Any corrections? No? Over to page 12, item eight. Page 13. And item nine. The page. Page 14. There's the very smallest slippage in the Welsh version. Dembisher County Council. It should be spelt Galway, there's just a typo there. Nothing major. If we go back to see whether there are any matters arising from these minutes. Page seven. Minutes one, two and three. Over to page eight, four and five. Yes, whose, whose voice is that?
It's Paul Pendlington.
Paul Pendlington.
Sorry, Chair, I couldn't find the. I'm not sure what page you're on because I don't have page numbers in my documents. I've just items. Item three, I asked about certain councillors secretly recording meetings and then subsequently putting screenshots onto social media. Hugh, leader Hugh, told me there was going to be a protocol put in place. Has that protocol been put in place?
No, I'm sorry, I thought there was some feedback there. No, sorry, Paul, no, it, it's on my list of things to do. I did start it, but I haven't finished it yet, but I will, I will be doing it and I will be circulating it to group leaders.
Is that okay? Thank you, Paul. Page nine. Over the page to page 10, item six. Brian Jones, councillor Brian Jones, please come in.
Apologies, Chair, it was a mistake.
Okay. Thank you for admitting that, fair play. Okay, thank you for admitting that, fair play. Page 11. Page 12, item eight. Page 13, item nine. And page 14, items 10, 11 and 12. Is anybody willing to propose that we accept these minutes as a correct record?
I'd propose as Vice-Chair, Alan James.
Thank you, Alan. Councillor Alan James, is there a second? Anne Davis, councillor Anne Davis, thank you very much. If you could all please show. You can see me from the council chamber. Anybody against? Or abstaining?
Yeah, I'm against. I am against. I don't think some of the comments about the nuclear growth deal are accurate.
Yaw, innel epe.
One against. Thank you very much, Paul. Item five. The budgets, and councillor Julian Thompson-Hill is going to introduce this.
Thank you very much, Chair. Okay, I don't think it takes me to say that we've been through a very difficult and unusual year, and that's been none more the case than with regards to our finances. I certainly never thought, when I was doing this last year, that I'd be presenting the budget from my home this year. And it just goes to show how we've had to adapt to developing circumstances. And those circumstances have basically necessitated that a number of our, the usual processes that we would probably have gone through have had to be contracted into a much shorter time period this year. The Budget Board was restarted back in the early summer, and they began to set some assumptions that we had to have in order to begin our work. And before the summer recess, services were asked to come forward with proposals for an up to 4% reduction in their budgets. Those proposals were then assessed in the autumn by the Budget Board initially, and we went through those, and some were supposed to be taken forward, some were required further work, and some were omitted for a wide variety of reasons. Again, entirely understandably, but we've not been helped by the fact that we had little or no early indications this year from Welsh Government in terms of what we could expect in terms of our settlement. And the timetable for announcements has also changed on a fairly regular basis, until we actually had the draft settlement released on the 22nd of December. We usually receive it in round about mid-October. And the final settlement, which we normally get round about just before Christmas, is not actually now going to be released until the beginning of March. We're not anticipating that there will be any significant changes between the draft settlement and the final settlement. And Welsh Government have given us the assurance that the settlement that's been issued is a business-as-usual basis, and that any ongoing and continued Covid financial support would be dealt with outside of the normal budget process. Members should be aware, either from attending the session that we had just prior to Christmas on the 21st of December, or I circulated the presentation for members who weren't able to attend, that we'd identified round about eight and a quarter million pounds of pressures that we really had little option other than to address. And we'd further identified another suite of round about 3.1 million pounds of pressures, which, in an ideal world, we would like to be able to meet, assuming there was sufficient headroom within the RSG settlement. One of the assumptions that we were still working on at that stage, prior to announcement of the draft settlement, was that we were still working on the basis that RSG would be flat, there'll be a 0% increase. We were assuming that that was very much a worst-case scenario, and that it would be better than that, but that was the assumption that we were working on in terms of the calculations for those figures. And just to clarify, we would have needed a settlement somewhere in the region of an excess of 8% to actually cover all of everything that we actually required, and nobody was realistically expecting that we would get something along those lines. So if I can turn to the detail of the draft settlement, the Welsh average was an increase of 3.8% uplift. We were an increase of 3.6%, so a little bit below the average. There was quite a wide range this year, probably the widest range in terms of settlement announcements that I've seen across Wales, from under 3% at the lowest end to over 5.6% at the upper end. And I'll come back to a potential issue with that a little bit later on. That settlement, as you'll see in section 4.2 in your report, also allows for transfers in a former specific grant into the settlement of 1.28 million pounds. You'll see in section 4.3 a summary of the pressures that we are able to fund from within the 3.6% uplift. And the 3.6 in terms of cash generated 5.42 million pounds of additional income over and above the 0% working assumption that we'd had going into it. So that left a gap of round about 5, just under 5.2 million pounds that needed to be found. So we addressed that in a number of manners. The first relates to increases in fees and charges. As I'm sure you'll be aware, we adopted a couple of years back a fees and charges policy, went through corporate governance and Cabinet, which essentially meant that heads of service were expected to review on an annual basis all the fees and charges within their portfolio areas, and to increase them at least in line with inflation, where it was legally possible so to do. And as a guiding principle, these areas should be as near as possible to self-funding from the income as possible. So that review garnered round 0.462 million pounds of proposed additional income. Then coming out of the proposals that came forward from the services, there were a number that were classified as genuine efficiencies, which identified, as I say, throughout the year and were within head of service delegation levels, and where there would be no impact upon the public. And that would generate, those would generate 0.69 million pounds. There were then a further category of savings, where there would be some change in the manner of service provision, though not necessarily cuts, they might be a different way of doing things. Those were shared with members at the briefing in December. Then in terms of schools, as I say, if you remember, two budget cycles ago, schools were asked to find a 2% efficiency saving. Last year, we began by asking them again for 2%, but because the settlement actually came in better than we had been anticipating, we were able to reduce the impact of that down to 1%. And again, for the coming year, we're asking them for 1% of efficiency savings for 21/22. Again, that's in comparison to the other services who were asked to find 4%. The Schools Budget Forum, who govern, obviously, the way schools finances is divided up, have been aware of this for some time, and will be, have been working with individual schools to be able to deliver that. So that would generate round about 733,000 pounds. We have to assess annually what we think we're going to get in from our council tax base. We always assess that prudently, and the actual income, we think, will be an increase of 369,000 pounds. So that then leaves, brings us to the always thorny subject of council tax, which essentially becomes the balancing figure. And I think you've all been circulated at various times with the sensitivity analysis of how an increase or a decrease affects the amount of income that we would actually have coming into the authority. As I said at Cabinet last week, and I'll say it again now, I think most of you probably will know my position, that we don't, we shouldn't, as a matter of good policy, be asking our residents, particularly at the time when they're in such a straitened situation as they are with Covid now, to pay a penny more than they actually absolutely have to for us to be able to deliver our services. So the recommendation that I'm putting to members today is that we would increase the council tax level by 3.8%. That would generate 2.132 million pounds of additional funding for the authority, and that would then balance off the budget proposals. Just to remind you, in terms of comparative terms, the figure for our element was 4.3% last year and 6.35% the year before. It's always a fine line and a balance in terms of increasing pressure on residents in terms of additional council tax and reducing the services that we provide them to, which are really the only two levers we have to address any shortfall. I said a little bit earlier that I'd touch on the wide range of settlements across Wales. And the reason I'm doing that is because some of those authorities who've received a significantly lower settlement level than others, as you would expect, have been lobbying nationally for a floor mechanism to be put in. In other words, that there will be a level below which nobody received an increase. And since the overall quantum would not change, if that were to be, if that were to happen, then essentially, the other authorities who were above that floor would take a small reduction across the board to pick up that slack. Whether that will happen or not, we don't know, but I know there are ongoing discussions. Also, the issue we have is that we're obviously making decisions, as are all other authorities, in the absence of the final settlement. And as I've said, Welsh Government have given us all the assurances, and we have no reason to doubt that, that there will be little or no movement between the draft settlement and the final settlement, but it's always a possibility. So you'll see that one of the recommendations in the report would be a delegation to Steve as section 151 officer in conjunction with myself as lead member, to use cash up to 500,000 pounds in order to balance the budget, were there to be any movement between the draft and final settlements. If I can just summarise now, and say that although I probably sounded quite negative throughout this presentation, I do want to stress the positive points that are within the proposals that are in front of you. The proposals mean that we will be meeting pay and inflationary pressures of just over one and a quarter million pounds. I'll go into more detail on this one in the next paper, but we're having to put an additional 350,000 pounds into the council tax reduction scheme. Schools will be getting an extra just over three and a quarter million pounds put into the delegated budgets. So even allowing for the 1% efficiency saving of 730,000 net, they will be receiving over two and a half million pounds of additional funding. Community support services for adult social care, we're putting in another 2.4 million pounds for that. Three quarters of a million pounds for education and children's services, for the pressures in children's services primarily. A quarter of a million pounds to address some pressures within the waste budget area. We've made some previous decisions as the council on flood schemes and various other elements, and we're securing the funding for the potential borrowing to secure that, just over a quarter of a million pounds. In terms of, I know that we're putting in 389,000 pounds of base budget to support potential borrowing, to support the initiatives which are being developed to achieve the carbon zero target. I know that's going through a different formal adoption process, but we've put the funding in place to allow for that. We're converting the one-off cash that we put in the budget last year into a budget line for a quarter of a million pounds to assess the impacts from the ash dieback scenario. And given all the uncertainties that I've been through with you, both over the late final settlement, Covid, we don't know exactly what's going to happen going forward into next year, and any impacts from Brexit, it's only prudent that we have a contingency in place, and there was a contingency of 683,000 pounds being allocated into that, into the proposals. Obviously, if everything goes well, and we have no call on that, that would be the first call that we would have for the following year's budget savings. So I think, to summarise, all of those are positive investments that we're making in our core services. The savings proposals are not going to, in any significant way, impact upon our residents. I wouldn't say that there aren't potential impacts on internal capacity, but those are things that we've been facing on an ongoing basis for a number of years and have to work with, as do all public authorities. And we're proposing a council tax increase, which whilst higher than I'm sure many might like, is the minimum that I would recommend to you, that we could actually deliver a balanced budget upon, and is broadly in line with what most of our North Wales colleagues are putting forward as well. Not that that necessarily need be a guide, but it does mean that we're not doing something that's widely out of kilter with what other authorities are having to do. So I think that's probably all I needed to say, Chair. I don't know whether Steve had anything that he wanted to add, which I've missed or got wrong. Otherwise, I'm sure members will have questions, and we'll go to that. Otherwise, I'm sure members will have questions and we'll, we'll go to that.
I'll ask, does Steve wish to say a word?
Just very quickly, I've just knocked off everything that I was going to say from Julian, as usual. He's covered everything. The only thing, just to mention, I did go to School Budget Forum again yesterday morning with the final proposal, so that, that, you know, there were very few questions. I think they were pleased with the two additional pieces of investment, which are the bits around the ALN and the small school sustainability, because we usually commit to covering all their inflationary costs and then have a, an initially target for them and this year. Specific, specific pressures. I'm just going to stop my, my camera. Sorry, sorry. Two children and a teacher as a wife all online at the same time, so my broadband is struggling at the moment. So yeah, so just, just to, just to confirm really that School Budget Forum have been consulted on the actual final proposals that are in front of you today, which I think was what I mentioned at Cabinet, the view who were there last week.
Thank you very much, Steve. Before we take questions, I've got at least four councillors wishing to ask a question. Can I just make a correction? Page 18, under 3.3.5, that the Cabinet confirms, well, that should be Council again. And further down, under 4, 4.3, I kindly ask the Cabinet to correct this. I do declare a personal interest because I am a member of the Fire Authority. The levy, it's a request for a payment from the fire service. Just to correct that. So we'll go on to the questions. Councillor Mabon Appguinver, please. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much, Chair, for giving me the opportunity to ask a question. Thank you to Julian for the introduction. A few things that I wish to raise. The use of wording in the introduction was very interesting. Julian refers to say that we are doing this, that and the other. I think it's important that it's not us as a body who's going to do this. It's the Cabinet who has done this. We need to emphasise that this is the Cabinet's budget, not our budget. The lack of consultation and the lack of transparency in this process, more than any previous ones, has been a major disappointment, to say the least. Speaking to some councillors who've been involved with the council years ago, days would have been set aside to discuss the budget. I certainly remember, even since my time here, that we used to get reams of papers with the figures on them to discuss and think about which part where we could cut from on and give to another heading. We haven't received any of this information. We've got one page, which is a type of balance sheet, one analysis or assessment page, the report itself, and then the wellbeing for the future assessment. So no information really about what's going on within the council. So it is not our budget. And in the impact assessment for the future, wellbeing impact assessment, it states clearly that there hasn't been any communication and no transparency by working with external bodies, by speaking to us. We had a briefing before Christmas that was a day before Welsh Government set its budget. So that briefing was a waste of time, we might as well say, and we haven't received anything since then. This paper was submitted to Cabinet last week and now it's in front of us today, without having any time to discuss it in reality or to go into detail and look at it in with a fine tooth comb. And on that basis, and Julian referred to the fact that this budget is meeting pay and inflation pressures. I don't believe it is, because over a year ago, we as an authority asked for a paper on the real living wage. We're receiving that paper today after this report. If we had received that before last summer, when we were expecting to have it, we would have been discussing real living wages part of this budget, but we're not. So that series of failures shows a lack of communication, lack of transparency, which means I certainly cannot support this type of budget where I haven't had a voice in it. And I would encourage other members to refuse it or to object to it until we have more available voice in the democratic process. I have got further questions. Do you want to have three questions at a time?
That's fine with me, Chair, however you want to handle it.
Okay, if we see, see what councillor Paul Pendlington wishes to ask.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to reiterate what Mabon said, really. I don't feel like I've had anything like the amount of information I need to make a judgment today. You're asking us to vote for a budget that will pretty much increase council tax on a bandier property to around about £1,500, which is more than most people get in a month in Denbysia. You're asking us to vote on that without the information we need to make a decision like that. As Mabon said years ago, we would have days and days and days to go through the budget line by line to say what we thought could go, what could be saved, what could be cut and all the rest of it. This is a take and leave it budget, and I'm personally going to leave it. But also, I think it's high time we acknowledge the fact that certain governments, like Westminster Government, seem to have billions and billions of pounds to play with for their friends, for track and trace services and things like this. They've got £100 billion to spend on HS2, which we're expected to contribute to, which will have no benefit to Wales whatsoever. It's not even coming into Wales. I think we need to stand up and say enough's enough and challenge Westminster to say fund Wales properly and stop expecting our residents to pay a month of their wages to prop them up. And one, my question, actually, to boil it down to a question, you mentioned the impact of Brexit. I know most of the Conservative members here today were staunch supporters of Brexit. And I know today you say the impact of Brexit, not the benefits of Brexit. Could you perhaps tell us what the impacts are going to be?
Thank you, Paul. Councillor Errol Williams. Councillor Errol, are you there? Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, in a way. In the December meeting, asked for this to go to the Schools Budget Forum, what they said. And I'm, I would like to know that the Schools Budget Forum supported this. That, that wasn't in the papers that we've received, that's my question. Thank you very much, Councillor Errol Williams. I'll take one more. Councillor Glen Swindler.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to reiterate. I'm just, so I've got a load of feedback. I'm going to reiterate what Mabon probably said particularly about, you know, this budget. We've seen nothing. What are we voting on? You know, a few lines on a piece of paper. We see again that individual schools are being asked to cut another 1% off their own budgets. I don't think that's the right time to be doing that. The schools are in enough, got enough problems going on without having to work out where to save more money. The council tax, we've, we've put up council rents again and service charges, council tax on top. I think where possible, we should be looking to absolutely limit the amount of council tax we charge the people at the moment. Still a lot on furlough, a lot of people losing their jobs. We've seen the unemployment figures again this morning. There's a lot of hardship out there and we should do whatever we want.
Thank you very much, Glen. Those are the four questions. Thank you. Councillor Julian Thompson-Hill, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm getting feedback now myself. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. I think probably most of the questions revolve around the same themes, so I, I won't select individual councillors to, to direct this to. I think I addressed within my presentation the fact that we weren't able, and I freely admit, we weren't able to do what we usually do in terms of the, in terms of the work. No authority has been able to do that because of Covid. We just simply have not been in that position. We've had no information. I mean, you know, a member said that the budget session was a waste of time. That wasn't certainly my, my feedback from, from other members with regards to that. It was certainly, we were presenting what we, information that we have available to us at the, at the time. That's all we can, we can do, that is all we can do. It's slightly ironic, because actually Steve and I had been discussing before we went into lockdown and, and at the beginning of last year, what we were going to do for the process this year, and it was actually going to be an expanded process. But that just was not physically possible to be able to, to do and to, to expect otherwise. I think he's being naive in the extreme, if I've got to be honest. There was a comment with regards to the, the, the real living wage. As you, as we all know, obviously, it's the next, it's the next but one item on the agenda. And as members are aware, and I'm not going to prejudge my introduction to that one, the, the level of real living wage isn't set until November, so having a discussion in the summer would have been meaningless, which is why it was always intended to come in at this time of year. And that's what we've always agreed that we would actually do over the last couple of years. And obviously, that's a separate decision that we need to, to take it, you know, later on in, in the agenda. On here. I'm, I'm not going to comment on any, any national questions, because obviously that's not relevant to the, the debate that we're, that we're here for today. I was, we were asked about impact of Brexit. As I explained, perhaps not, not clearly, it is an unknown that we're facing. There may well be no financial impact, positive or minus. It could be, it could be a positive benefit, it could be a negative. We don't know. That's why it's prudent to include that as part of the contingency element that I'm proposing that we put forward. That's one element. Covid is another, and the late settlement is another element towards, towards that. It's been prudent to allow, to do that, to, to just not, not put in a contingency would, it would, would really be a self-defeating tactic, I have to say. In terms of the Schools Budget Forum, I think Steve did say he'd had a further discussion with them recently, subsequent to the meeting. And, and they're aware of, of the requirement, as they have been for some time, in terms of the saving. And they're also aware of the additional funding that's being put into, to their budget. And I'm perfectly sure that they're not jumping up and down saying, oh, thank you, I'd, I'd, I'd level 1% reduction in my budget, any more than any of our other services were saying, please, can I reduce my budget? But I think they accept the fact of the, the, the real world fact of where we are. And as, as do our own internal services. In terms of council tax levels, I actually agree with you, Glen. I think I, I think I said that, for me, that council tax should be the absolute bare minimum that it actually is to be able to deliver the services. If you wanted to reduce it lower than that, that, that is entirely a decision for, for members. And that, I suppose, goes to the, the number of it. That, that is the decision that members are being asked to, to vote upon. Not the individual proposals. That isn't, that, that, that isn't, that isn't actually a council function. I'm sure Gary will correct me if I'm wrong on that. What we are here today to vote upon is the overall package and the level of council tax. The, were we not to be increasing council tax to that level? And I, I very much wish that we could have a lower council tax level too, to put less of an impact on, on our residents. The only knock-on effect from that is that we would have to be putting forward more cuts on the, on, on to residents. And to be quite frank, having been through the process, even if we were to bring forward some of the, the ones that we didn't think were appropriate, they would be unlikely to be able to deliver savings in year, in any event. So it, 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 it's not an ideal scenario. I, I put my hands up to that in terms of the, in terms of what we haven't done, that we've done in, in years past. But we've, what we've done, we've done, given the circumstances that we and all public bodies in Wales have faced. And we're not treating anything in any, in any different manner to anybody else. And just, 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 just one final point. If any member or group of members had wished to put forward alternatives, they can at any time do that. And nothing has been raised with either myself or, for the best of my knowledge, with Steve about that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I think Glen Swindler has indicated it. Please speak, Glen.
Yeah, sorry, just, just to come back to you there, Julian. Sorry about this. But, you know, you stand if we had any other proposals, we could have put them forward, you know, at any point. We didn't even know what the proposals are. And that's the problem. That's at the crux of the whole thing, that we weren't given any details to make any changes. We can't propose different levels of council tax or anything, because we don't have the figures in front of us to, to work it all out. That, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think there's anybody else. Mabon, do you want to come back? No? Okay. If nobody else indicates they wish to speak, can we take it to the votes, please? Is there anybody proposing something?
Chair, I'll, Chair, I'll do the proposition, please.
Proposed by councillor Julian Thompson-Hill, second it.
I'll second it, Chair. Richard Maynon.
Thank you, Richard. So we'll take it to the votes. What's, I know it's difficult to do it. What I would suggest, Chair, if it's been proposed and seconded on something important like this, if you ask everybody to show in favour, ask for any against and any abstentions. Okay, everybody who's in favour, item five, the budget, please show now.
I thought we were going to go through them by name, actually, Chair, but I'm quite happy to do it this way.
Nobody's asked for it to be done individually.
Sorry, I thought that was what Gary was recommending.
The recorded vote, then one-sixth of the members present need to, need to indicate that they want a recorded vote. And, and if that's, if that's the case, then I've got the forms and I can go through it. It's a matter, it's a matter for members.
Can I propose that? I'll suggest we do the recorded votes.
I'll second that, says councillor Mabon Appguinver. Who was proposing that?
Councillor Pendlington.
Councillor Paul Pendlington. And the second it was councillor Mabon Appguinver. We need enough members to indicate that they wish to have a recorded vote. Please show if you want to go for a recorded vote. Officers, can you please count? Mr Chair, eight members have indicated that they wish to have a recorded vote. So that has been carried. So would you like me to take you through the recorded vote process?
Of the purpose of a recorded vote, but just if there are any people watching the meeting that don't understand, this is where I read out a register of councillors' names and they indicate how they would vote either for, against or to abstain. So.
I'll take, go through it from the beginning. Councillor Mapon Appguinver, against.
I think we've had his apologies. Councillor Joan Butterfield, I think we've had apologies. Councillor Jeanette Chamberlain-Jones.
Oblied, yeah. Ellie.
For.
Oblied.
Conhorred Anne Davis.
Councillor Anne Davis.
Councillor Gareth Davis.
Or?
Conhorred Merrick Lloyd Davis.
Councillor Merrick Lloyd Davis abstained.
Who Evans.
Councillor Hugh Evans.
Councillor Peter Evans.
Peter.
For.
Councillor Bobby Feeley.
For.
Councillor Tony Flynn.
For.
Councillor Rachel Flynn.
For.
Councillor Hugh Huldie Roberts, in favour.
Or?
Councillor Hugh Evans.
For.
Councillor Alan James.
Alan, we're not catching it. Is your mic on? No, it's off. There we are. Alan.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, sorry, technical hitch. Reluctantly, four.
Councillor Brian Jones.
Or?
Councillor Tina Jones.
For.
Councillor Pat Jones.
Had. Sent apologies.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
Goes on to five. I don't know whether it's different in the English version. Yes, it is, Chair. I'm not sure what's happened to your part. In the English version, it goes to four point four, which finishes on page thirty eight in the English. I'm on page forty and I haven't done that. I think maybe a page hasn't been printed. I've got four point two and then nothing after that. Okay, thank you. It appears that that's an error in the Welsh version of the document. If you can just go through point four point four for a creature like myself once again, please.
Yeah, sure. Um, four point four, I'll just get to it myself. Uh, so the first one is the ability to increase the standard extended payment period of four weeks given to people after they return to work when they have been in receipt of a relevant qualifying benefit for at least twenty six weeks. Uh, B is discretion to disregard part or the whole amount of war disablement pension pensions and war widows pensions when calculating income. And C is the ability to backdate for up to six months any application for council tax support awards for working age customers more than the standard period of three months prior to the claim. So those are the three elements that we actually have discretion over, Chair.
Yachwan, I'm here, Julian.
Thank you very much, Julian, for the, for your assistance there. Does anybody wish to ask a question? Or are you ready to go to the recommendations in three? Are you proposing these, Julian?
I am indeed, Chair.
I'll second the Chair.
Seconded by Martin Holland. Thank you, Martin. So we'll take it to the votes. Is there anybody against? I think it makes it easy when we're doing it over Zoom. Anybody against? Anybody wish to abstain? So we'll take it that you were all in favour of item six. You have been through the recommendations. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on. The item seven. Before we go on to seven, maybe it would be an opportunity. I'm sure that you would like to have a break for a cup of tea or coffee. So what if we have a fifteen minute break? Return at quarter to. Thank you very much. Short break. Welcome back. Thank you very much for that small break. Lovely to have a cup of tea. We're on item seven. Councilor Julian Thompson- Thompson Hill will be introducing with Sophie Vaughan and Steve, Steve Gadd. Julian?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. Sorry to, sorry, it's, sorry, it's me again.
All right.
Okay, um, as, as was, was mentioned earlier, um, this is the second or third year um, that we brought a paper at this time of um, of year in relation to um, the real living wage. Just to give um, a little bit of background, um, as you'll see in the paper, uh, there was a national living wage, which is the legally enforceable minimum um, wage um, that all employers have to, to pay, um, which obviously we comply with as an, as an employer, uh, which is currently at eight pounds seventy two uh, per hour. And there was also uh, the real living wage, which uh, has, is assessed by the, the Living Wage uh, Foundation Group of Academics, uh, updated each uh, November. Um, last November, uh, the rate was uh, increased on this to nine pounds fifty uh, per hour. These, these things are always further complicated by the fact that the uh, national pay discussions and the, the final national pay award always come out much later in the year again, um, depending on when the negotiations are concluded. There were, there were two elements to the reports, um, that, that are in front of you. The first one is actually the um, real living wage and how that applies to uh, our pay scale in, in Derbyshire. Uh, and then there's the, uh, the wider issue with regard to accreditation as a real living wage uh, employer. Um, on, in terms of Derbyshire, uh, you'll see from the report, uh, sorry, this is going to get a little bit technical. Um, the, uh, you'll remember, uh, there was a, 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 two years ago, I think it was, uh, there was a total re, uh, restructure of the grading points and it removed a lot of the, the lower uh, scales. Uh, so that for a couple of years, the bottom scale was, was, was automatically above the um, the real living wage um, advised figure. Uh, grade one, which only has one uh, spot, get my teeth in spiral column point, which is SCP one, uh, is currently paid at nine pounds twenty five uh, per hour. And grade two, SCP two, is currently paid at nine pounds forty three uh, per hour. So those are the only two um, grades of staff that uh, are being paid currently below um, what the uh, Living Wage Foundation uh, recommends. Uh, I'm sure you'll be aware that the um, UK Government Spending Review uh, was, was talking about a pause on uh, public sector other than NHS uh, staff pay. Um, that's, uh, of, of course, that, 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 that might well be uh, national government's uh, indication. However, in strict uh, legal terms, um, the pay uh, scale is negotiated by the um, local government association uh, as the employer and that actually is not, would not be binding upon them in their negotiations. And those negotiations are, are ongoing. Um, again, you'll see in, in the reports, within those two uh, SCP uh, bands, one and two, uh, we have seven hundred and twenty five uh, staff um, that are affected um, by that, six hundred and fifty seven on SCP one and sixty eight on SCP two. Um, you'll also see from the um, Chief Financial Officers' Report, um, were we of a mind to um, increase those two SCP points to the nine pounds fifty uh, minimum? Uh, that would have a, a financial impact of thirty seven thousand four hundred and fifty eight pounds plus on costs. Uh, we have, um, well, not just us, you know, and, and any employer has six uh, months after the November um, uh, announcement to implement um, any uh, increase. Um, and it probably, given, given our, given the wider financial um, situation we find ourselves in uh, with Covid, if we were to do, i- if we were to implement it uh, in year, that would obviously create a, an additional in year um, pressure. So it would be more advantageous to uh, perhaps uh, utilise the, the six month period and then, and bring it in uh, at that period in the, in the new financial year. In terms of the, the wider situation, um, you'll see that uh, there is an option to become an accredited real living wage employer. Um, what that would actually mean uh, is that we would be, by doing that, we would be bound to uh, implement uh, any recommended increase, regardless of whether we could actually afford to do that at any time. And also, we would be required to um, ensure that all contractors and providers also um, were paying at the same uh, at the same level. Now, that of course has a, a, a significant financial um, impact attached to it. Uh, just um, in terms of residential nursing sector alone, and that's only one sector that would, that would be hit. It would be in excess of a million pounds additional that we would need to, to find uh, were we to, were we to do that and I, I, given our financial situation and the budget we just agreed, I just don't see there's any way that we could actually um, do that. So um, I'll hand over to Sophie now, uh, to either correct what I've said or to, to add anything. Uh, and then I'm sure we'll go over to, to any questions and any recommendations that you, you may have. Sophie?
Yachwan.
Yeah, Sophie?
Thank you. Um, yeah, you've covered everything that, that I wanted to say really, so I'll look open to questions.
Steve, should I take it?
Steve, do you wish to say a word? Steve Gadd?
Um, hi, yeah, no, not really. Julian's covered everything. Um, only, only to say um, that because it's been a strategy of Welsh Government, um, with the pay negotiations to target those, the lower end of the pay scales as well. Um, that's why we, we, we are so close anyway. So the decision on our pay um, is one of timing, I suppose, rather than in the past, it would have had a huge financial impact. That impact has actually uh, decreased um, over the last couple of years because of the emphasis on, on making sure that the lower paid get a, a bigger percentage increase. And that's just been from the negotiation, you know, a strategy over a number of years with Welsh Government and local employee, local government employees um, within the negotiations. So it's slightly different this year as we, we were coming together.
Yachwan.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the questions. I've got two who have contacted me yesterday. Mostly Galen Swingler was the first. Thank you.
Um, thank you very much, Yachwan. We first raised this at Plaid Cymru back in twenty seventeen. Um, we said then that we didn't expect to become a real le- living wage employer overnight, but that we'd like to work towards it and that's why we keep getting this back every year. Um. Excuse me, just a moment, sorry. I've got a technical issue here. Yeah, we raised this back in twenty seventeen. We we're not expecting this to come straight away. We've wasted another year this year now because we've already voted on the budget without considering the real living um, wage aspect. So that'll be another year lost. We would also, you know, we, we, we're talking about the, the social care aspect of that. These are our frontline workers that have been working extremely hard under dangerous situations, you know, over the last year or so. And to give them a real living wage would surely be something we should be aiming for. Now, what I've not seen yet is a roadmap to how we do become a real living wage employer. We just keep being told, oh, we can't afford it this year, we can't afford it this year. Where, you know, give us some sort of roadmap. That's what we asked for back in twenty seventeen and we've still not received that. Thank you.
Yachwan, Glen.
Thank you very much, Glen. The next speaker, councillor Graham Timms. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
How? I'd like to add to the recommendations to councillors. And um, uh, just to say just to correct Glen, actually, first of all, uh, it was a Labour motion actually that first brought it up, but I don't want to fall out about that because I think it's an important issue and we don't want to get uh, caught up in party politics. Um, but um, uh, we've talked about it for three years, um, and everyone's familiar with the idea of the real living wage and the government's so-called living wage, which George Osborne's named after the uh, original minimum wage. Uh, he changed the name of it, but again, politics, let's keep our politics for the moment because there's a really important issue here for our lowest paid staff. Um, the uh, initial discussions that we had, uh, looked at the NJC scales that the county use. And um, after, uh, after we had those initial discussions, the following year, the NJC minimum scale went to nine nine pounds, which was the minimum wage, the real living wage. So it's automatically resolved itself without any need to um, to, to make any more resolutions at the council for our own personal, uh, the people employed by the county council. Um, however, uh, as we know, this eight, sorry, last April twenty twenty, uh, the, the minimum on the pay scale went five P below the uh, real living wage of nine pounds thirty. Um, now, under a normal situation, I think we would have uh, looked at that and we were supposed to receive a report from, from uh, the lead member for finance about that to see what we were going to do about it as a council. We didn't, our last council meeting though, uh, councillors approved the new pay scale where we fell yet again below the real living wage for our uh, uh, workers that pay the minimum, uh, uh, paid the minimum. Um, in order to rectify that, uh, it would mean paying them five P an hour more. Now, I know that's only a small amount. It works out to just under a hundred pounds a year, I think, on, on the pay scale. Um, however, to the people who are receiving this, it's not a small amount. It's a matter of being able to afford or not afford to live a decent life. Now, um, the recommendation from the Real Living Wage Foundation comes out in November each year and as Julian says, uh, the count, the um, those following it wouldn't be expected to put it in until uh, six months later. They'd get six months in order to implement that. Uh, now, this is plainly daft for us to revisit this every year as a council and talk about, oh, is this five P or this five P or twenty P or whatever. It needs to have a proper policy. And so what I'm proposing, uh, on proposal two is that we go back to April two thousand and twenty and put the scale one pay up by five P an hour. Now, that will cost us, scale one being the only ones that are affected by this, that will cost us as a council seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty four pounds and forty three pence plus on costs, seventeen thousand pounds, nearly eighteen thousand pounds. The county pay bill is a hundred and six million pounds plus on costs. Seventeen thousand, we're asking for the, this, this, to, to uphold this principle. Uh, that's the first recommendation. The second recommendation that uh, we'd like to add is to pay at least the real living wage for next year because November's already passed. The Real Living Wage Foundation have said that the real living wage is going, has gone up now to nine pounds fifty. And so employers will have to start paying it at the latest by the end of April next year. Our pay ramp comes in April next year on, on twenty twenty one. And I'm proposing that we uh, put the bottom rate of pay up to the nine pound fifty. Now, just to get the scale of what, what, what the council would be committing to there. Richie Sunak, uh, in his autumn statement in November said that there would be a public pay freeze. However, those under twenty four thousand pounds would go up by two hundred and fifty pounds minimum. And that means that um, the pay of our scale one workers would go up to nine pounds forty sorry, nine pound thirty eight is my, my calculation on that. Now, um, if we were to put it up, it's going to cost us another seventeen, sorry, not, not seventeen pounds, it's going to cost us thirty seven thousand pounds from April twenty twenty one to twenty two. So in other words, it's costing us seventeen thousand for this year's pay, thirty seven thousand five hundred for next year's pay. We can't keep revisiting this as a council. It's not the way to run a pay scale. So the final proposal is that the council make an informed decision on a move to becoming a real living wage employer. And uh, uh, and in order to do that, uh, I want to propose that um, the lead member for finance brings a report back to the council with uh, a costing and a way forward. So, uh, as we talked about, I think Glen mentioned a roadmap of how we're going to get there. We know it's going to cost one point one million pounds or so. But let's see what the future roadmap is. So I'm suggesting, first of all, put pay to nine thirty this year, put pay to two fifty next year. And then uh, let's have a roadmap by the end of this year, put to council by the um, lead member for finance. Delphine Bowden, Mr.
Yachwan. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Thank you. If I can ask Gary whether he's managed to get that down. I'll ask him to read it out.
Mr Chairman?
To just check it's acceptable.
Could I, could I second that proposal, please?
Well, when I've had it clearly uh, set out, yes. Yachwan, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Uh, as I understand it, there would be uh, three uh, additional recommendations. The first one would be um, to uh, backdate to April twenty twenty, uh, the real living wage amount for those who would have uh, lost out of the last pay deal at a cost of seventeen thousand pounds per annum. Number two would be to uh, guarantee to pay the real living wage that was set in November twenty twenty for um, do apologize, somebody's trying to ring me on my laptop. Uh, sorry, number two was sorry, pressed a wrong button. Uh, number two was that um, uh, that for financial year twenty twenty one, twenty two, we pay the real minimum wage as set in November twenty twenty uh, for all staff who would otherwise be below it and that, that would cost thirty seven thousand five hundred pounds. And the third recommendation, as I understood it, was a proposal that the lead member of finance brings back a report to council for a, a costing and a roadmap of how the council could become an accredited real living wage employer. Is that?
Gary, do you have a, a, a?
Is that acceptable?
Could I ask if?
Uh, no. Can I just, sorry, um, I really don't think the, the council is supposed to make decisions on the basis of the papers that are put before it. Um, papers that are being emailed around during a meeting that, uh, A, I haven't had sight of. Uh, I'm sure Steve Gadd hasn't had sight of and that the public who are viewing the meeting won't have had sight of. It's not an appropriate way to conduct ourselves. So um, that if, if members are going to be relying on information that's not been put in the public domain or that has not been uh, had a chance for any advice to be given on, then I would caution against that.
Apologize, Chair. Uh, I just thought it would be helpful because I've got the recommendations written down there for people to actually see rather than um, having um, that, that was my point. I apologize for that, Chair.
Ah, Niamh, Graham, I'm here.
Are you happy with what Gary Williams has read out? Or does it need any amendments or corrections to any wording at all? No, it's okay. Thank you. Right. Thank you very for seconding. So it's been proposed, it's been seconded as an amendment. So instead of this, I take it, Mr Chair, that it's been proposed as an amendment in addition to the recommendations that are there. It's a matter for members to discuss now. Is number three at the moment worth considering? If they vote for this. This is an amendment. So technically, this is an amendment. It's been proposed and seconded. So now we've got, the councillors have got to discuss and vote on the amendment before they can vote or discuss anything else. Either the original recommendation or a different amendment. Thank you, Gary. Okay, so it's been proposed and seconded. We'll take it to the vote.
Chair, can I, can I ask that Steve Gadd can, uh, be brought in for the financial implications, please?
Sorry, what I was going to say, Mr Chair, you, you've had a um, a mover and a seconder, uh, but that needs to be debated. And to be fair, I think the finance officer is entitled to come back on that.
Yachwan, Gary.
Thank you very much, Gary. Does anybody want to raise any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Catherine Roberts?
Hi, thank you.
Come on, Catherine.
Please come in, Catherine. Can you hear me? Yes, we can now.
Yeah, if I could just come in on the revised proposal. The first one, which is around paying the real living wage going back to April last year, um, doesn't raise any issues in terms of um, equality between, you know, the different grades, et cetera, the relativity between the grades. However, the um, second proposal to pay the real living wage for spinal column point one and two from April this year does cause or could potentially cause issues around equal pay inasmuch as um, spinal column point one, one is grade one as determined by the Job Evaluation Scheme and spinal col- column point two is grade two as determined by the Job Evaluation Scheme. So I think before we agree to that, we would need to have a look at the risk that that potentially will rate, will, um, cause the council due to equal pay. Um, so I think personally, I'd prefer if we could go away and do a little piece of work on that first before we agree to anything.
Catherine? Sorry?
Just coming in on the, on the roadmap, by all means, we can, um, you know, look into uh, what it would mean to become a um, real living wage employer and present that to you um, as, as a plan of action.
Graham, you're here, don't you, ma'am?
Graham, if you come in on that, please, what do you think?
Um, Chair, yeah. Uh, if I could just say that the calculation based on the, on the uh, second one about um, next financial year, uh, what I did was I, I added two hundred and fifty pounds to scale one and scale two. Scale one then goes up to eighteen thousand and ninety two and scale two goes up to eighteen thousand four hundred and forty eight, which means that um, it will be, scale one would be paid nine pounds thirty eight a year, twelve pence less than the uh, nine pound fifty. And scale two would be on nine pounds fifty six, so it would already be above. Uh, taking the differential be- between one and the other, nine pound fifty on scale one and nine pound fifty six on scale two. That was my reasoning on that one.
Catherine?
What are your thoughts, Catherine?
Um, I think it, it, just in terms of, we need to understand or um, exactly what was being offered in terms of the pay going forward from April, in terms of any pay award, et cetera. So um, that would be my only comment there.
Yeah, Chair, Chair. Would it be possible uh, for us to vote on uh, the first recommendation and the third recommendation that we're proposing? And the second recommendation about the pay from April, that a decision be made at next council on that one? That gives uh, uh, Stephen Sophie time to have a look at it in detail. And possibly there'll be announcements from the Welsh Government before then and it won't even be necessary.
Yachwan, Graham.
Thank you, Graham. What do you think, Gary? If we amend the second one to go forward to the next council and vote on recommendations one and three?
Be doing that is would be um, the, the amendment would be that um, we would back, for the council to backdate pay of spinal column point one back to uh, April twenty twenty at the real living wage rate for that period. Um, and that there be a report back to council in February in terms of the um, impact and consequences of agreeing to pay the real living wage in the coming financial year. And then number three would be as was. Is that, is that what's being proposed?
Yeah, yeah.
I just, perhaps just need to check with Catherine and Steve if that's doable by then. Um.
Chair, can I just come in?
Yeah, ma'am. What's up, Glen? Yachwan, Catherine.
Please come in, Catherine and Steve. Just on the points that we've just discussed.
Catherine, do you want to go first?
Um, in terms of whether it's doable for February or the next council? In terms of whether it's doable for February or the next council, it will be dependent on when we get any information in relation to the pay award next year, which might not be February nor, you know, in the past, it could be as late as sort of May, June, July before we've had that information. So it's dependent on when we get that information.
Okay. Chair, can I come in?
Come in there.
Yeah. Just on the recommendation one and two, as Catherine just pointed out, I think obviously this year's straightforward. If the recommendation says something like we commit to being a to max real living wage each financial year pending the local government pay settlement. Because if we do anything before the local government pay settlement, we will liable to get ourselves in a right pickle. Because as has been pointed out, the pay settlement, we have no idea what it's going to be. I've put an estimate into the budget and I've been sort of, I've put in enough in the budget to cover what I felt might come out of this meeting. So that the budget isn't a reason for not doing any of this. But just as far as the process is concerned, to bottom it off for years going forward, we can then plan that actually we can build that into the budget every year and the process every year. But those members of staff will be treated like every other member of staff and will be have their pay rise backdated as and when the final pay settlement for that year is agreed, but we'll adjust that pay settlement to ensure that the lowest paid are above that real living wage every year, if that makes sense. Does that make sense, Catherine?
It does. I think the complication is that where it affects the next level up, if you want. So we need to make sure from a pay perspective that the relativities are there from one grade to the next. And it gets complicated when, say, grade one or grade two gets to the point where it's as much as those on grade three, for example. And that causes us issues then in terms of equal pay. And actually, if we got to that point, we'd have to probably relook at a whole pay structure to make sure that we've got the different scales that recognize the differences in the jobs effectively. So it's not as, it isn't as straightforward as just saying that we will apply or we will match the real living wage because it does have a knock-on effect on other people at the pay scales. And if you think back to it's not that long ago that we've settled all the equal pay issues, historical equal pay issues that we've had. So we need to be absolutely sure that we don't get ourselves into that position again. So I suppose my preference would be is something that we would, and I know it's not ideal, but it would be something that we would look at every year when we know what the pay award is going to be and we know what the real living wage is for that year. And then that way we can look at what impact it has on the rest of the pay structure and come up with a proposal on that basis rather than commit to it every year. And that was one of the reasons why, and not just us, but one of the reasons why the majority of the councils don't commit to being a real living wage employer because they have no say over the pay and effectively then they have to address the issues that it raises for the rest of the pay structure.
Chair, can I come in, please? Yeah. Yeah, Mark.
We're speaking, Councilman Mac Young.
Yes, can you hear me, Chair? Yeah. Okay. Just, I just want to raise an issue that obviously when money's tight and I've just noted that the First Minister has urged the public sector last year to pay the real living wage. Wouldn't it be appropriate that we ask as part of this process that the government put the money where the mouth is and pay for it? So I do want to bring that in because it's okay for the First Minister to urge us. But you've seen how tight the money is and he's saying they deserve it because of the work they're doing in the pandemic. Well, I think they should get it, but I think the government should fund it. And I'd like that as an amendment, please, Jock and Val. Yeah.
We'll go back to that.
Mr Chair, are you looking at the hands up or just taking people who shout out?
Somebody's speaking. You can't have an amendment of an amendment. So we'll deal with this amendment first and then we'll go back to the amendment that you've mentioned if we need to. There are other people who've indicated that they wish to come in. Judith?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Chief Executive.
I mean, I think, Members, the intention is quite clear. Well, from yourself, it is anyway, Councilor Tims, but equally, I'm hearing some slight nervousness from our two key officers around finance and HR. And what I'd urge you today really is just to allow us to go back and do some more work to make sure that you're in the possession of the full information that you need to make a decision before you do. That would be my plea to you today, really, is just to set out what piece of work you would like us to carry out before we come back to you and make a decision. But of course, it is a matter of yourselves.
Yeah. Chair, can I try and be helpful then?
Well, we're the speakers. I don't know if they want to come in, but...
Yes, I would like to come in, please, Mr Chairman.
Well, Bobby, can I have a pull off line here?
I've got other people in front of you, Bobby. If you wish to come in, please do it now.
That's okay. I didn't realize you had me on your list. I thought it was just people shouting out.
Chair, as the proposer, I want to try to be helpful, if I may.
Do you have a?
Thank you, Graham.
I'd like to suggest that we move ahead with the recommendation, the first recommendation that the real living wage is paid to all council employees in 2020, basically, isn't it? The 925 to 930 increase for scale one. I'd like to press ahead with the request for the lead member of finance to bring a report back to council to outline a roadmap. But the middle recommendation, I think that what I'm hearing is that the finance officers would like to consider that and bring that back to council. And I think that's thoroughly sensible. I am very much against politicizing this by Mark Young's suggestion that we go back to the Welsh Government and start doing that because, you know, we can start talking about where does the Welsh Government come from. We don't want to do that and this is let's keep it out of this debate, if we could, please, Chair.
Do you have a?
Thank you very much. Barry, are you happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy for setting up proposal.
Thank you very much. So do you want to go through it again? It's now been corrected.
Members, it's me again. I'll just run through what I understand it to be then. The proposer and the seconder of the amendments have agreed that the first amendment would be that all council employees who were paid below the real living wage during the financial year 2020/21 would be paid at the real living wage level that was in place in April 2020. And that secondly, that the lead member for finance brings a report to council for a costing and potential roadmap in respect of how the council could become an accredited real living wage employer. And that effectively, the second recommendation that was proposed is dropped, subject to further work taking place.
Do you have a Gary?
Thank you very much, Gary. I have got names of speakers to come in. I'll ask Hu Irving first. Hu Irving. And then Martin Holland.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased to hear what Gary has just said. I'm very pleased to hear what the proposer of the amendments has just conceded. Nevertheless, I do not like this. Of being bounced. And I feel we are being bounced this morning. We're working under difficulties. I can't get my laptop to work. I've only got my iPad. That means I've got no papers. We can't quickly have any interaction with our colleagues around us. And I feel the whole three, all items should go back for full and quiet reflection before they're considered and voted on. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Hu. I'm sure we apologize for your IT difficulties. It is more difficult. I must agree with you of that. And I do apologize on behalf of the county. But we are in the situation that we're in, I'm afraid. Martin Holland, if you could please come in.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just to concern again here, I've listened to the officers and the potentially, you know, what we're proposing at the moment is minor cost changes. But the HR position of if we go ahead with this and start manipulating the grades, it has a knock-on effect on other salary grades. Can I ask the question? If we, as Councilor Tims is suggesting, we backdate this to 2020, how does that affect the pay grades? Because if you're upgrading people at one end, there's a potential knock-on effect on the other. I really, again, would just prefer that we ask the officers to look at this and come back next month and tell us whether this is practical and what the knock-on, potential knock-on effects could be. Thank you.
When we've got the living wage.
Thank you. Glenn has put his hand up. Thank you, Glenn.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All I'm hearing here is let's have some reflection. Let's go back and do some more work. This was what was supposed to have been started in 2017 when this first proposal came up. We're just going round and round in circles and kicking it in the grass, year after year after year. Let's actually start doing something, please.
Thank you very much. If you can put the hand down now. Where do we stand now, Gary? Just for me to be clear.
Mayrick, you still haven't asked me.
You still haven't asked me to speak.
I have waited patiently.
Yeah, do you have a? Do you have a? Do you have a?
Please speak now. Please come in.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I don't really want to ask a question, but I want to raise a point. And I feel duty-bound to do so. And I'm talking about the public perception. Over the last year or so, because of COVID, there are so many small businesses, small business people and large businesses, which their employees have suffered. There has been mass layoffs and the unemployment has had a sharp rise. I am very worried about all the people that have been affected and some of these businesses won't come back. They'll never come back. And the public perception of us discussing, which seems to be a lengthy discussion on whether or not to give a rise, which obviously will have a knock-on effect right across the scale, I find really worrying, really worrying. And I really don't think this is an appropriate time to be discussing this. The rest of you perhaps all think it's a grand idea. And it is. I'm not arguing with the principle at all. It's the timing.
Do you have a?
Thank you, Councillor Feeley. Councillor Heath Thomas has asked to come in now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
But I think we're agreed that we did start talking about this in 2017. So to answer what Councillor Bobby Feeley has just said, if we'd actually implemented this in 2017 or 18, we wouldn't be in the situation of trying to implement it, she thinks, at a time when people are suffering lack of jobs and so on. But we are talking about the lowest paid workers and I don't see the public would object to us paying these people a real living wage. We're not talking about the executives. We're talking about the lowest paid. My point is that when I think about whether something is going to cost a great deal to the council or not, my rule of thumb is whether it costs more or less than filling the salt bins. And this proposal, as we saw, was £37,000 with excluding on costs, costs less than refilling salt bins. So it's a very long and an interesting discussion. But to anybody on the outside, it would seem that we are dragging our feet on this. So please, can we have a move on and start paying this real living wage? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Heath. Nobody else has indicated that they wish to speak at the moment. So I'll ask Gary to go through what we should be voting on now.
Okay. My understanding is that currently what you have in front of you are the following amendments. Firstly, that all council employees receive the real living wage for the financial year 2020/21, which would essentially involve backdating the pay of those on spinal column point one who were on nine pounds twenty-five up to the nine pounds thirty. And that was explained would cost £17,000 for the year. And then the other recommendation you have is a proposal that the lead member brings back a report to council for a costing and a roadmap as to how the council would be able to become an accredited real living wage employer. I think in respect of the second amendment that have been put forward, it's been agreed that that would not go to the vote now, but the officers would do work on what the technical consequences would be of doing that in the financial year 21/22, which would be dependent upon, of course, the pay awards that may or may not be agreed in that time. So essentially, it is to backdate the pay for the current financial year for those below the living wage and to bring a report back on a costing and a roadmap as to how the council could become a real living wage accredited employer. I think that's what everybody's talking about.
I will ask Graham to just tell us whether he accepts that now as the amendment.
Yes, yes, Chair. Happy with that. But just regarding from April 21 to 22, that report presumably will be coming back as soon as possible.
Yes.
Well, I, sorry.
You wish to set a date?
Catherine explained that we're a bit in the dark about it until we get the information from the employers, well, the Joint Council of Employers and Employees as to the progress of those pay awards. I think what we can certainly undertake to do is that as that process goes on and once we have an idea of what that's going to be, we would be able to bring something back to members to explain what the consequences would be on the basis of the pay award at the time. It may be that the pay award resolves the issue for you.
Yeah, I'm happy with that and I hope that's taken any sort of worries that council members would have about this particular, these particular recommendations.
Thank you very much. So now that's ready to go to the vote. Martin still has his hand up. Martin?
I'm more or less happy with what's being proposed now. But just one, I did go back to that point that if we're backdating this and therefore increasing the salary grades for staff back to April last year, can HR just confirm that that doesn't impact on all the other grades as well at this time? If that's the case, then I see no problem with what's being proposed at this stage.
Thank you very much for that, Martin. Catherine, whoever else. Steve?
Yeah, do you have a?
Which takes it up to nine pounds thirty. And there's enough of a gap then from the nine pounds thirty to the next spinal column point. So it doesn't cause us any issues for the last year.
Thank you very much. I think that's clear enough now. We'll take it to the votes. How are we going to do this one? If we go... Please show with your hand or your virtual hand. Who is in favor of the amendment first? Please show in favor of the amendment. Please keep your hand raised. It does take more time doing it this way.
Any clap on?
Yeah.
If you're against the amendment, please show clearly. Against? Anybody abstaining? Have we counted? It has been carried. It's difficult because the screen changed. We have all votes. The vote in favour has been carried. So now we've got to vote again on the substantive motion. If you could take us through that, please, Gary.
No, no. Essentially, what you've agreed to do is to amend the motion. And therefore that becomes the substantive motion. And so that is the motion upon which you would vote. And so you would need to vote, given the issues that we have with voting. It may be subject to what you consider, Chair and members, best just to ask if anybody wants to vote a different way to the way they voted on the amendment.
Thank you, Gary. Is anybody against accepting the recommendation that's been accepted as an amendment? No? Anybody wish to abstain? No? So we accept the recommendation as amended on that. So we look forward to getting further reports. Thank you very much. Apologies if it took so long, but we've got to make sure that we're correct and accurate and do things properly. We'll go on to item eight. And councillor Glenn Swingley is putting forward this notice of motion.
Right, thank you very much. Firstly, I'd like to point out that this motion is not about interfering in lead officers' powers. What it is, is that we call for the decision date on the intended restructuring of the homeless service with the loss of nine posts to be postponed from February the 1st, 2021, until the reasoning behind the proposed major internal reorganisation has been examined by a council scrutiny committee. Now, implied, come with, obviously, like many of you, very supportive of the homeless support teams there. And we see housing homeless families as a priority. We supported the paper on homelessness that was presented to us during the last full council meeting without knowing about any of this restructuring that was going on. Now, the only reason we know about it now was obviously because somebody within in that department went to the newspapers. And the unions aren't happy, clearly. Now, we are, as councillors, we've got a corporate responsibility to our staff. And all we're asking is that the lead member assures that any final decision on this restructure will not take place on February the 1st as originally put out in this document and only take place when this matter has been looked at by scrutiny or by cabinet. Firstly, one other thing, I'd like to thank councillor Bobby Feeley and the head of service in the homeless prevention team for meeting with our group last week to go over some of these points. But I'll leave that with you now, thank you.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Councillor Bobby Feeley, do you wish to respond?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I have got a fairly comprehensive response, as I'm sure, and I'm sure you'll understand, it needs explaining thoroughly. So as reported to partnership scrutiny committee on the 5th of November 2020, the Welsh Government has developed a three-phase plan to set out the priority areas and key principles that local authorities should consider and adopt as part of their strategic and operational planning for tackling homelessness, moving people on from emergency accommodation and developing effective housing-related floating support and supported accommodations. Included in those papers in that report was a summary of the plan, which is required to have rapid rehousing at the heart of its services and to utilise a range of support models, including housing first, which is a high level of intensive activity 24/7 over a long period of time. Critical time interventions, more medium-term interventions with at least one to three interventions every week. Rapid rehousing and floating support is short-term, low-level intervention to get a household settled within their tenancy. Assertive outreach to engage with the most disengaged rough sleepers. Also included in the papers was information on how community support services intended to implement required changes to cope with these new regulations, which will include developing a multidisciplinary team consisting of mental health professionals, substance misuse worker, social worker and occupational therapist, prison liaison officer, probation staff and counselling and physiotherapy lead. The restructure of the staffing model within the homeless prevention team to meet the needs of the new service. Further information was not provided at that time because in line with council policy, a consultation exercise is required with all staff and unions to consider any changes involving personnel. The consultation was originally due to close on January 20. However, following discussion with the trade unions, this was extended to the 29th of January, following which, community support services will consider the responses before reaching a conclusion by the end of February. Any changes to the team structure will be implemented by May 2021. The proposals as consulted would ultimately reduce the staff complement for homelessness and accommodation support by one post and one post only. Although there are a number of changed roles that require different qualifications and skills and which provide a more comprehensive response to the whole issue. In fact, to give my own opinion, my own view, I think it's probably likely that we will need more staff, not less. As members are aware, staffing structures are delegated to heads of service in the council's constitution. And the process does not involve member scrutiny, and this includes me as lead member. However, the lead member and the head of service can provide a report on any revised structure and an update on how this will enable the council to fill its responsibilities to citizens at risk of and experiencing homelessness at a suitable time. And I want to emphasise in conclusion that the people at the heart of the work that's going on are the homeless people that we have to deal with on a daily basis. And they are the main people that we are thinking about during this. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you very much. Glenn, you are allowed to respond if you wish. This is a motion, so it is possible to have a discussion. You've had the motion from councillor Glenn Swingley and you've had the lead member responding to the motion. Before having a discussion, you need a second for the motion. If there is a second, then you can debate it and then take it to the vote. Thank you for your guidance. Is there a second for this motion from councillor Glenn Swingley? I second it. Councillor Mapman Upwin will second it. Are you happy for us to discuss this? Like anything else that comes before the council, it's been proposed and seconded, so you can discuss it. Does anybody wish to raise any points about what you've heard from both sides? Heath Thomas and Hugh Hilditch afterwards. Yes, I've heard the voice, but I haven't seen the hand yet.
A few days after the last full council, a consultation document was produced, as stated by councillor Feeley. And I don't really think that at full council is the time to go and discuss individual roles, so I'm not going to do that. But I have a list in front of me and I won't name the roles, but here we have job role for review deleted from structure, two jobs, four jobs reviewed and reduced to three, home and another job deleted from. I'm sorry, you've had your turn, councillor Feeley. There are quite, there are quite... Chair, can I just continue, please?
Please hold for a moment. I can't have you all talking across each other and interrupting.
A very hardworking homelessness team, who we all praised at our last full meeting, to receive a notice just before Christmas that they had to reapply for jobs because their existing job descriptions were being changed. I don't think that that's something, that I think it was something that was hurried. It was just before Christmas, there was Christmas and there was New Year. And the decision is to be taken on the 1st of February. So all that this motion asks for is that more time is given to discuss with the staff and that if it's possible for it to come to scrutiny or to cabinet so that we know what's going to happen, because this is really more than just a change within a service. Some of the jobs which are to be created are people who are going to be seconded from outside. So it's far more than just a few job roles being changed. And all we're asking for as people with a responsibility to our staff is just for the department to take more time to look at this and to finish their discussions with the staff. Because I believe there could be grave reputational damage to the council in the weeks to come if this matter isn't sorted out to everybody's benefit. We want the homelessness team to be more efficient. We want them to be able to prevent homelessness rather than having to solve the problems of people who've become homeless. And we just want reassurance that this is being done in the right way and it's not being rushed. Because all indications are that it has been a very hurried process. So we're asking if councillor Feeley, as the lead member, can assure us that it won't be rushed through with a decision on the 1st of February, then we will be satisfied with that. And I don't mean delayed till the 2nd or the 3rd of February, but just to give everyone more time to make sure that these changes are ones that are going to be of benefit to people who are at risk of becoming homeless. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Heath. Gary, do you wish to come in?
I think there's a couple of general points I need to make about this. The first is that it's not rushed and it's not the 1st of February. The lead member's already indicated that the consultation period was extended and that a decision would be made by the end of February. The second thing I think I need to point out is that we have policies and processes for these things, which are designed to comply with our legal obligations and to ensure that people are treated fairly. I have nothing in front of me that suggests that we've done anything other than follow our own properly adopted processes for dealing with this type of thing. I have to say that when considering staffing matters, these are matters that are delegated to, you employ people to do this and you employ a whole HR service to support them to do it properly and fairly. And I think that you get into dangerous territory if we start to have discussions about staffing matters in public meetings, where politicians are effectively trying to pause or halt a process that's being followed in accordance with our processes and procedures, which are legally compliant and which ensure that people are treated fairly. And I really do think that members should pause and think before they start getting involved in these matters. The issue that councillor Feeley pointed out was that the responsibility is to deliver the service in the best way that we can. And that is the purpose of the restructure. And members are perfectly entitled to scrutinise the outcomes of those services, what impact it has on citizens and residents, to ensure that we are providing the best service. But I really don't think it's appropriate for you to try and stop a proper lawful process that's been instituted in accordance with our procedures. Everybody involved will be treated fairly. Everybody involved has the right to be represented. And everybody involved has the right to appeal against decisions that are made under the process. And I think you should trust the processes that the council has adopted to ensure that people are treated properly.
Yeah, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Chief Executive, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Gary said the vast majority of what I was going to say, members, but you know, equally, I understand your concerns that this is a key service for the council. So can I suggest that it would be appropriate, you know, rather than dealing with the details of the restructure, as councillor Feeley and Gary have just outlined, that it's something that perhaps you might want to look at in scrutiny in a few months' time to see how the new restructure has bedded in and how that's impacting on service performance and delivery.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I have got more speakers. So before we go any further, I will ask councillor Mark Young.
Thank you, Chair. Gary's answered most of it, but I just want to double check. After listening to what Gary's just said, is the motion bona fide? Because it sounds in conflict, so can we just have confirmation? Because I've heard what he's just said, it makes sense. So my question is, should the motion go forward? Because it sounds in conflict. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the response in a minute. Councillor Hugh Hilditch Roberts, please. Thank you, Chair.
Even though it is not a lead member's decision and the lead member is not involved in this process. Now, I've done what Gary's told me to do, pause and think. And let me tell you what I think, is that this motion wouldn't be here if it had been communicated correctly to members in the first place. This is an example, further examples that we've had already this week, that we're not getting information about what's happening operationally. There is a big divide and it needs to stop. And I actually would support this going to scrutiny because I don't know what's happening. I don't know what the effect on the homeless will be on the back end of this. And actually, there is a precedent where we did take economic development. I chaired the scrutiny many years ago on the effect it was going to have for the public. So I actually fully support the motion because it is important that members are not kept in the dark about what's happening in our council. Fully respect the process of restructure is a head of service, no issues with that. This wouldn't be here if we'd been communicated and seen sight of this earlier.
And I can I come back on that, Mr Chair? Just to say that we shared absolutely as much information as we were allowed to do during the process, short of going into the details of the restructure at the partnership scrutiny, which Jeanette chairs. So it was, we had as much in the general public
So it was, we had as much in the general public knowledge as we could possibly have without compromising individuals. And I'm sure Gary can back me up on that.
I'm sure he'll be able to come in in a minute, Bobby. I've got two further councillors, councillor Glenn Swindler. Councillor Maponap Gwinver. Thank you.
But going back to what Gary has said, and thank you for the advice, Gary. But notwithstanding that advice, it seems to me that this is more than merely an operational matter, restructuring or operational restructuring within the council. There seems to be here a service change. And therefore, it requires high level understanding and communication. Because we as a council, as the body of the council and as councillors, will have to stand by this decision where there's a major service change, which is what is being proposed. And when there is a service change of this nature, then surely it's right for it to be scrutinised. Not only scrutinised in public consultation, in consultation with the unions and with the staff, which is ongoing, and wider consultation, expanded consultation, which is what the motion is asking, but also taken to a scrutiny committee so that the body, us, the council, understands exactly what is being proposed and then can hopefully support it. Because if it's the right thing to do, then the body, the council, will understand the proposal and put its weight behind it. That's all that the motion is asking ultimately.
Thank you very much. Have you got something additional? I don't want to keep on going and going.
It went before chairs and vice chairs of scrutiny last Thursday, I think, and it was turned down. If it had gone to scrutiny, then we would have probably withdrawn this motion. So now to hear that it should go to scrutiny is certainly good news. But last week, it wasn't good news that it went to scrutiny and it was turned down.
Okay, we've had the message, thank you. Gary would like to come in.
To confirm, a request was made to scrutiny and it wasn't turned down. It was scheduled for the autumn to look at the outcome of the restructure. So there is an item that scrutiny chairs have agreed to take later on in the year to consider the outcomes of the change, to see how they're bedding in, to see what impact or benefits the residents and customers have seen from it.
Thank you very much. Jeanette.
Yes, thank you. We did have a good debate about this at our partnership scrutiny. We agreed it. But we did say that we would monitor and it would come back. We did feel that the homeless and the situation that we have needed some expertise, which is already in the record. And I think, as Bobby said, we did need to be in some ways restructured, enabling us as an authority to actually do the very best we can for the rough sleepers and indeed the homeless. So I was hoping once this was up and running that we would bring it back to the partnership to see exactly how it was going. So I'm a bit surprised at what's happening. And we did also agree, as been said, that we would review it again if the chairs and vice chairs. We didn't throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Yes.
We are looking at it. And as Bobby rightly says, we do need to really look in depth at this. And it was agreed at the partnership scrutiny that we would do exactly what the report said. And we recommended that, Chair.
Thank you very much. That's enlightened us, I'm sure. Haze, do you accept that as principle? Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thanks for that explanation, Gary.
As soon as possible before the changes were made. But I understand that the scrutiny will look at it once this is in place and the staff changes have taken place. But I do hope that by then it's not too late and that we won't have lost specialisms from the department. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Hey, William. Thank you, Chair. Please be careful not to identify, no, I didn't name anyone. It's possible to work it out. That can be a problem as well. Gary will help me on this. Gary, please come in.
It's not just about naming people, it's about giving information which might cause somebody with relevant knowledge to be able to identify an individual. That therefore becomes personal data and we should not be discussing people's personal information in public.
We do understand, but we have within restrictions. Yes, I understand, but we've got a job to do as local members. I accept that and thank you. I don't know whether Catherine wants to come in or somebody else wants to respond to see whether we can proceed to the vote or not.
Yeah, just one question I asked about whether it's bona fide the motion?
We haven't had an answer, so that's to be fair, Gary.
Bring a motion on any matter for which the authority is responsible or for which affects the county. So it is possible to bring such a motion. The issue is, is that the motion says it calls upon, because it's not actually, the running of the homelessness service is not actually a function of the council, it's a function of the executive. And the operational running of that function is delegated down through to the operational head of service. So it's perfectly appropriate for a member to bring the motion. And it's a matter for members whether they agree with it or not, having heard the advice that they've been given.
Thank you very much.
Mr Chair, can I just round off?
Yes, indeed. Can I just have a minute back?
If you switch off the camera, please, Embry. Please switch off the camera and speak now. Okay, we can hear you now.
No, we can't.
It was again scrutinised in a HR issue, which I fully understand. However, what we have here, as Hu Hillditch Roberts has mentioned, is information that's came to us after a discussion. And it's the not knowing, that's a problem. You heard here, William, saying he's having to deal with local members, et cetera. And we all have to do it in various aspects of what happens in the council. And we need to have that information in front of us. And we didn't have it fully in that scrutiny meeting we had in the partnerships before, I recall. In any case, in the actual advice, yes, the resolution was to move it into November meeting, I believe. Part of the Wales report on homelessness, which is the Welsh government's report. It's all part of it. We can't, it's not going to be specific on this, and I am fearful of that as well. I'm just outlining the discussion we had in the scrutiny, the chairs and vice chairs of scrutiny here. It's not a satisfactory situation. I'm very much aware of that. And it's the not knowing that's worrying us.
Thank you very much. Before Glenn comes in, and I am going to allow him as the one who's put forward the motion. Bobby, would you like to come in now, just to say what you wish to say?
Well, I'll let Glenn go before me and I'll round it up.
Well, no, it's his proposal, so.
Sorry, I thought he wanted to make a comment. Okay, then.
We'll withdraw this motion now. Yeah, on the understanding that it does go to scrutiny for, you know, for an in-depth look. I want to point out that we do support wholeheartedly the homeless prevention team. All we're trying to do is make sure that, you know, happy staff, a good staff, that everybody's in the right place. It was the fact that we heard about this through the newspapers. But for now, we'll withdraw this motion certainly so that we can move on.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. And I would just like to assure everybody that this will be discussed until the end of February. And also, the date we hope to have the restructure in places may, if it takes longer, if they do need longer, then obviously, as they have done already during this process, they will expand it. Unlike somebody who spoke in the beginning, I can't remember who it was. It certainly hasn't been rushed through. It's been a long and careful planning. And, you know, we have given as much information as we possibly can to the partnership scrutiny without getting into the actual names and jobs and the restructure itself, because that would not be appropriate. So thank you all for all your comments and thank you for your support, Jeanette.
Thank you very much. Before we can go any further, I need confirmation from councillor Maponap Gwinver that the motion has been withdrawn. Glenn has proposed that, yes, I accept that. So the notice of motion has been withdrawn and we have had the debate. Thank you very much. Quickly now, who's going to take us through the forward work programme?
Programme is there for you. The next meeting's on the 23rd of February. As you can see, there's the climate and ecological change strategy, the technical resolutions around council tax, capital plan recommendations of the Strategic Investment Group, treasury management strategy and the avoidance and reduction of plastics in Derbyshire County Council. And clearly from today, we will need to put into an appropriate date in the forward work programme the reports that would relate to the real living wage. I'll discuss that with officers and members and get that entered up.
Thank you very much. Anybody got any comments on the forward work programme from February onwards? Yes, please. Hu. Councillor Hu Hillditch Roberts, please come in.
And I know that many members were involved in flooding last year when things happened the year before. I just think that the report on the investigations and the conclusions should come back to the full council in the forward work programme in the future. Because I think there was a few things that were left off last time that we didn't see a conclusion to. And I'd like to see that it's accountable here in full council so that the public can see that we as councillors are demonstrating that we are looking into everything and making sure there's no stone unturned into the flooding and the outcomes and the future, please.
I'd like to second that, Chairman.
Chair, if I could just come in a second.
Sorry, who's coming now?
It's councillor Richard Maynor, if I may, Chair. The first of those wash-up meetings is taking place in 50 minutes' time. And councillor Brian Jones and myself will be in attendance. It's not what would normally happen because they tend to be quite operational. But both councillor Jones and I are going to be sat in with all of the senior officers involved and that process will start. And I can happily give a commitment that what we learn from this incident can easily be fed back to full council and it should. So I agree with Hu Hillditch Roberts. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
So what we'll do is, once that work's been done, if we can be notified of an appropriate date, we'll stick it into the council forward.
There we go. Is that okay, Hu? Thank you, spot on. Gary has promised to bring it back to the council when the reports are ready. Somebody else do the reports, I'll put it in the forward work programme. Any other comments? Nope. So can I thank you all very much for your patience? Apologies for the difficulties that we are having with the new technology. But it is something that's near to us all and it's not always easy. An apology that I have to take so much time to bring you in and for the discussion to take place. It isn't as easy as having you here in the chamber in your usual seats. Can I thank you very much? Please take care. When you're shopping, when you're doing all your other activities, please stay safe. Hand raised by Martin or just waving to say goodbye.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Take care.
See you later.
Thank you, Chair.